Hi Catherine.
Hi. How are you?
I'm okay. How are you doing?
Okay, hanging in.
Think we're only gonna have four people tonight. Hi Jim.
We're here. Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Of course. Good to be here.
Well, I'm waiting for Sean. Brian didn't think he could make it, so.
Old lady in this camera angle.
Oh, Al. We should put a big plant in front of that porthole.
No. Hi Sean.
Okay.
Hi Sean.
Hi Sarah. How you doing Jim?
Hello.
There's only four of us tonight.
Enough to get business done, I assume, yeah?
Means we need a unanimous vote.
Oh. Pressure's on.
This is where we learn what it takes to get things done in Manchester.
Oh, and Gail's on. It is seven o'clock and I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order on Wednesday, May 18. Because we only have four members with us tonight, it will require unanimous vote and we, if needed, we will take a straw vote prior to a final vote if it seems in doubt. If it seems in doubt, then you would have the option of continuing to next month when we have a board of five. Unfortunately, we have people traveling on business these days. So, I'm Sarah Malish. I'm the chair of the ZBA. With me is Catherine Howe, Jim Dietrich, and Sean Zahn. So, the first item on the agenda is a new application. It's the application of Albert Stagg. I will open the public hearing for the application of Albert Stagg for a special permit under sections 4.1.10F, 6.1.2, and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to install an oval swimming pool, spa patio and fire pit at 19 University Lane, assessors map number five, lot number 34 in District C filed with the town clerk on April 19, 2022. So, at this point, we will ask somebody to present the application to the board.
Albert, you want me to do a quick walk through?
Yeah, if you know the verbiage, please proceed.
Sure. I need to have my... I need to be able to screen share. Somebody turn that on?
I just did.
All right. Let's try again. There we go. It's great. Okay.
Could you state your...
Oh, sorry. I'm Matt Ulrich with the Ulrich Landscape Collaborative. I am the designer for the project.
Thank you.
So, I think some of you were able to come out the other day, which was great, and kind of take a look at this project. Basically, what's currently there is, you know, this is an existing deck. We all, well, a few of you parked kind of in this parking area. Now, we walked down this little walkway onto a deck, and then this is a large deck that exists. That's a series of kind of different levels. If you recall, we kind of stood up here on this little arc and looked down into the pool area, which currently now is just kind of some mixed vegetation and a man-made landscaped pond, which is kind of located down here in this bottom portion of the site. So, what we're proposing to do is come in and kind of tighten up the grating on this hill a little bit, have a break in the existing railing so that there is an opening to bring you down from the deck through a series of likely granite stairs and down into kind of a decking area here and this kind of oval-shaped pool with a vanishing edge down on this lower side. It will then be fenced, basically, kind of along the property line here, along the back, behind a couple of big existing dogwoods, coming back up the property line, and then the fencing kind of cuts right across this slope with the idea that we're gonna kind of bury it in the existing vegetation. I can show you some photos. So, this is the type of, be some version of this, but some type of fence where it kind of cuts across between those stairs. We're looking at red cedar and just like a black mesh. The idea is that this fence is gonna recede kind of into the landscape. The nice thing about red cedar is just usually use it because of its durability. You'll usually get, you know, 20 to 25 years out of a red cedar post, and you'll get maybe about 10 years out of a white cedar post. So, it's good stuff, very rot resistant, and usually within a year or so. This is gonna weather to that really kind of smooth silvery gray that you see. So, what other kind of tricks? And then along the property lines where this fence is more hidden, we're gonna go with something, just basically a simpler version of that, which is gonna be red cedar posts and just using that black mesh, but not boxing it in like it does where we cut across. I can show you where that happens. So, these three sides right here, where, and even up into here, we're proposing just that box and wire fence, that simplified version, and then where we cut across through, you know, this red cloud, which is all vegetation, it's gonna be a slightly fancier version. We're basically just boxing that. Yeah, so as far as materials, we're using natural stone. I'm gonna use like a large irregular blue stone flagging. We're gonna be sourcing some reclaimed granite stairs, which is usually like curving that comes off of road projects, and sometimes it's as old as, you know, 50, 100 years or more. We're going for kind of a planting scheme that's gonna be a mix of vegetation that you would naturally find in this area. It's a lot of fern and Lakewood Way and rhododendron and that sort of thing. You know, really, the concept of this is we're trying to, if anything, enhance the natural site and basically plant this and situate this pool in such a way that it feels totally kind of nestled into this bowl, which I think you might have gotten the effect of when you stood up on the deck. When you look down on this, it's kind of carved into kind of a bowl-shaped landform. We're trying to really accentuate that and hopefully improve it and make it a lot better than what's currently there.
Thank you.
Thanks. Now, I will ask the board if they have any questions. Jim?
No, I have no questions because they pretty much got answered the other evening. I believe the gentleman who just spoke didn't mention lighting, and he might want to just address that just for the record.
Absolutely. That's a great question. Thanks for bringing that up. So, really, the lighting for this is gonna be very simple. We're gonna do some path lighting on that lower kind of decking area and maybe around the pool. This is a fixture that we like, which is basically just a really small china hat path light. It's a copper fixture, which will patina. If you're familiar with copper, you see copper on a roof or a gutter. It gets a patina, especially when you're kind of so close to the ocean. That usually happens in a couple of months. But these are downward directed lights, so there's no light shining up. They're meant to just throw kind of a gentle wash and like a circular pattern to basically provide safety, but also some, you know, interesting kind of lighting effects when you look down at this on the pool from the deck. The other fixture that I don't actually have a cut sheet for in front of me, but that is another ground-mounted fixture. We're probably gonna be throwing some light across these stairs. So, there's a small fixture. It's just probably about the size of a half dollar and gets drilled directly into the top of the step, and all it does is shoot a beam of light kind of across the stair. So, again, it's more just about safety than anything. You know, it obviously is gonna get darker the further away you get from the house. So, you'll see, you know, we have some pathlight locations kind of along the outskirts of the decking, and then we plan on lighting up the steps. But again, dark skies compliant, nothing directed upwards. We're not doing any uplighting or anything like that.
Will there be any lights in the pool?
There will be. Those, probably one or maybe two lights in the pool. They're usually faced on this inside, so they're facing out away from the deck in the sitting area. Yeah, so they're just, you know, I think you're probably familiar with those, but it's kind of like the size of a headlight, basically. I believe they're LED now, and that's just gonna, you know, kind of provide a little bit of a glow to the pool.
Catherine, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Sean?
No, I don't have anything, Sarah.
So, are we ready to have me make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Albert Stagg for a special permit under sections 4.1.10F, 6.1.2, 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to install an oval swimming pool approximately 26 feet by 23 feet with an infinity edge, which will replace an existing landscape pond, a spa, blue stone patio, fire pit, and landscaping with low voltage LED lights and a four-foot-high fence enclosing the pool with locking gates at 19 University Lane, assessors map number five, lot number 34 in District C with the town clerk on April 19, 2022. Based on a finding, the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw. The structure will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood and all requirements and conditions under section 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the following conditions. The pool, spa, patio, fire pit, lighting, and fence are located and constructed in accordance with the following plans and documents. Proposed pool plan prepared by Donahoe Survey Inc. dated April 11, 2022. L1 layout and materials plan prepared by Ulrich Landscape. L1 planting and lighting plan prepared by Ulrich Landscape. Lighting shall be low voltage LED similar to garden light, X-light, and Clarolux AL1 Violetta, no taller than two feet, and one or two lights within the pool. The four-foot-high black mesh fence and gates with cedar posts shall be constructed in accordance with the specifications of the Manchester zoning bylaw and the Massachusetts Building Code. Do I have a second?
Second, Jim.
Give me a second. Any discussion? Are we good with it?
Yes.
I will take a roll call vote. Jim?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Sean?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. I'll be happy to write this. Who would like to review it?
I'll review it, Sarah.
No, Jim will review it. Okay. So, the special permit is granted. It will, once we write it and file it with the town clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period. We have up to 90 days to write the decision. We will attempt to do it in a much shorter period of time. The, once it's filed with the town clerk, it will expire within two years, so you need to commence construction within that period of time. Any questions from the applicant?
Oh, thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
They're not all this easy. Okay, we will move on to administrative matters. There are no minutes to approve. Is that correct, Gail?
That's correct.
Okay. That's because I just sent her information today.
That's correct, too.
The next item on the agenda is to discuss the zoning changes on the warrant for the special town meeting on June 11. I sent you a link to the various measures that are going to be on. They're still being fine-tuned. I believe they're being voted on at the planning board meeting tonight. I also sent you a document on some ADU research I had done, and I sent you a copy of a memo I had sent to the planning board regarding concerns I had regarding the changes. The... And they have, under the non-conforming uses and structures, they did insert the requirement that structures and impermeable services conform with the bylaw. They also, I believe, last night increased the minimum size of the ADU to 1,200 square feet from the 900 square feet. Um, I don't know how much time people had to look at this. This is a lot of stuff. I guess I want to know what you thought. Oh, and the other thing they did is they changed, I believe they've changed that referral requirement, so it wouldn't go to the boards. It would go to staff, because if it goes to the boards, then the boards would have to notice it and have a open meeting in order to discuss each application, and I was concerned that that would adversely impact our timelines. Any thoughts, comments? Jim? You're on mute?
Sarah.
Oh, go ahead. Are you gonna say something, Jim?
No, I said, I'm sorry. I'm not muted, am I?
No, you're not now.
No. I just wanted to get your feeling on these, this issue.
I do not support the ADU section of the bylaw. My personal feeling was that it was going to cover, it was gonna be by right, which was going to be problematic, and it was not gonna cover the majority of instances that we're seeing coming before us. We're not seeing people trying to build ADUs to rent them out. We're seeing people trying to create separate living spaces for, it seems to be mostly parents who sell their house and wanna move in with kids and, and, you know, pay for the renovations. I suggested, and it wasn't accepted, I suggested that you could take the current bylaw and eliminate the lot size requirement and add the option of building on, to building ADUs on detached structures. But this, this ADU bylaw does say that anything that doesn't qualify under the strict parameters of the bylaw would come to the ZBA for a special permit, and there are really no limits on what the ZBA would consider under a special permit. It wouldn't be bound by any of these rules. So, I didn't like the fact that you have to certify every five years that you live there. If you fail to certify, they could, you would have to take your kitchen out. I mean, you know, it just seemed overbearing to me, but that's a personal opinion. I don't know if anybody else looked at it and opinions.
It seemed to me like they made it more complicated than they had to. This will have to come, be approved by town meeting.
On June 11.
June 11.
Yep.
Do you have any sense of how the public may feel about this?
The sense I've received is, I think partly because of the legislation around the train center depot area, which is building by right. I think there's people sensitive to allowing ADUs by right and that they would rather have it all by special permit, so they have the opportunity to be heard and understand what's going. So, it may be that that's an amendment put forth on the floor, or it may be the planning board will adjust this before it gets to, gets on the warrant. It's fluid.
Yeah, it's... I've never fully understood why the planning board and the zoning, why the, the relationship between the two boards. It seems that... Well, I've never fully understood it. I've been on the zoning board now for what, about 10 years? The things we, I'm sorry?
Plus, probably.
The things that we get to deal with and the things that the planning board gets to deal with, like what's, I just, I've never understood it. It seems that cumbersome. But, um, and this is, this is another one of those issues where they, they come up with something, and then we are asked to basically be the approval agency. Why don't they just approve it themselves?
That's not the way the, the...
Does that go back to 40, to the 40, section 40, when it was written?
The state, yeah. It goes back to the state, and so what generally happens is, is that the planning board reviews larger projects where there's a site plan review, and the ZBA reviews requests from individuals. And the reason for that is that the planning board initially recommends the bylaws, which are approved by town meeting, and as the name of our board is Board of Appeals, the applicant is appealing the bylaw that was written and wanting an exception to it. So, it makes sense to have it be a different body.
Thank you. That's actually, that's a good explanation. Rest this, raise this question a number of the workshops that I've attended over the years, the ZBA workshops, and it seems that there are a lot of different opinions about it.
Oh. Sean, do you have any comments, thoughts, or?
Well, I'm kind of running through my emails. I know you sent those two documents today, but you were saying something else, that you sent something else out, a link or something?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Did other people receive it?
I only got one email from you, I believe, this evening. It came in at 4:29.
No, well, I sent another one.
Yeah, with the two documents.
Me too, Sarah. I think I don't, I don't think I got a link from you. I just think I got the documents.
That's the only one I got.
Well, interesting. Wonder where it went.
Mr. Angler.
I will send it to you again so that you understand what the changes are being recommended. They're all up on a, it's a funny link. It is HTTPS: colon, double backslash, BIT dot LY, single backslash, MBTS zoning. And that's where all of the changes... And that's where all of the changes are, but they're, they're still being changed. It's not finished yet. Now I've
So the email that I do have.
Yep.
You say attaches research I did on ZBA app.
Yep.
May have been considered under a more liberal ADU bylaw. And there were attachments. And that's all that I did receive.
Yeah, and then there was a, a, a document that was zoning changes. Six, 11, 22, special town meeting concerns.
Yeah, I got that, that was attached to that document.
Yeah. Which, so that's what I had gone through. All of the sections of the bylaws. And these were the things that I was concerned about. And for instance, there was one thing where in the condition, they were requiring a surety bond. And I said, well, ZBA doesn't do that. It should be, say, if appropriate. And same thing with the referrals, that doesn't make sense for town departments to look at every single one of our applications. That would push out our time between receiving the application to the time of the meeting by a month. And so it makes more sense that we only refer things that apply, like we don't, we don't do anything that impacts a DPW. We don't do anything that impacts the Board of Health. We do sometimes have applications on the overlap with Conservation Commission. So I think that we need to do, we need to start sending them a copy of applications we receive if they're within the, the Kong Kong jurisdiction or think it might be. So at least they have a heads up so that there's just more integration between the various areas. Really, the only stuff we've had is swimming pools. Oh, no, there was some stream that somehow swept. Okay, so but technically, any, anything that's being changed, we're in a holding pattern. So if somebody came to us, so they're eliminating the living space for an employee of the owner over a Cara Chelsa garage that they're eliminating because they're expanding the ADU. So if anybody comes to us with an application for that or if anybody comes to us with an application for an ADU, we can't hear it. It has to be deferred until after the town meeting votes. And then after the town meeting votes, any zoning changes have to be approved by the Attorney General. And it's not clear to me on the nonconforming uses, if we have an issue of somebody who is already in the setback and wants to expand. I've gone to them on that and haven't heard anything.
So if they just got approved, this could be, this could tie things up for a bit.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And it's also, you know, it means we've got a whole, everything's been renumbered, everything's in different sections. They chose to eliminate in our bylaw, some of the stuff covered in the state bylaw, which means we have to reference both the state bylaw and the local bylaw, which I did raise concerns about. I, I think that's not realistic to ask of a volunteer board, like, you know, I know when I first came on as chair, I didn't know you needed the bit about in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw. Something that town council looked at at one point and said, oh, you need that? I said, oh, you do? So so we'll do the best we can.
All we can do.
Exactly.
Sarah, I
Yep.
The shift of swimming pools to the building inspector, would that stop us hearing anything on a swimming pool?
No, because it's less restrictive.
Okay, just checking, just asking.
Yeah, so as long as it's less restrictive, we can go ahead and do it.
Okay.
It's if it's more restrictive. And we'll, I'll look and see what the final ADU comes out as to see how that impacts us. I, I don't know what they can do about it. I had a conversation today with Gary Gilbert when I was on my walk today. Was the one who drafted the ADU thing. We agreed to disagree. Any questions on zoning changes of the process?
No, sounds like I better do read them anyway before town meeting.
Okay. Next is set status of decisions. I believe that the only one outstanding is the 94 bridge, which I'm writing. Is that correct, Gail?
That is correct. And everything is at the registry.
Fantastic.
Oh, Sarah, did you say that the the litigation down on Bridge Street? There's been some changes there. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly. You mentioned something about it the other night. This is the, the, the basketball court that was
Yeah, so, so the butter appealed. The applicant is kind of saying he wants to undo it. And the interesting thing is, and it's with, town council is talking to the applicant's attorney to try to work things out. But the interesting new development today is I always check the real estate every day and 151 Bridge Street is on the market. So, so I don't, I don't know what will happen if if he, if he doesn't fight the appeal, then the old bylaw would stand. I mean, the old special permit and my concern, what I expressed to town council was my concern is that the old special permit is flawed because it didn't include the survey that was required. So nobody knows where it was supposed to be. So I, I don't know. And I don't know what he's asking for. You know, I don't know if he's asking. He wants us to rescind the decision, but when you rescind the decision, you either have to deny it or he has to withdraw it. And I, I don't, I don't know. And I, I told, I did say that we offered to let him withdraw it during the public hearing and chose not to, so. So I, I don't know. It's a mess. And I don't know if he can sell it with the mess of the special permit. Until it's resolved, so.
It's a mess primarily.
What?
A mess that was created by the applicant.
Right. Right, exactly.
And now it's part of his deed. It's already gone to the registry.
That's true.
With a statement that it was appealed?
No, it was, it was sent to the registry before it was
No.
Before the
It can't be. It was supposed to go to the registry with a statement from the town clerk saying it had been appealed.
I will contact, I will be in touch with the registry.
I mean, I can double check the regulations, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that if a, a special permit is appealed, you know, the, the town clerk has to certify to the special permit that the appeal period is over. And has to say either there were no appeals or there is appeal. And there should be in a, a statement from the town clerk to that effect.
All right, I need to look at that. I will do that in the morning.
Okay.
I will review that.
Well, okay, the original special permit that was issued in, what is it, 2012?
Yeah.
That's not, is that being is that under appeal as well now?
It can't be. They can only appeal this current one.
So that one is standing. Even though it was, even though it was issued without complete documentation on the part of the applicant.
Correct.
All right, that's shame on the zoning board for missing that one.
Right.
Shame on me. I wrote the, I wrote the decision or part of it. I approved it. I didn't write it, I approved it. So that is still, that's still applicable.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Alrighty.
And so presumably if if the appeal wins or if we're asked to rescind the decision, then theoretically the, the lot would have to go back to its original condition.
Isaac, have a good workout.
Okay.
Hey, Cavalo, you need to go on mute. Thanks. So do people understand what I'm saying? It's, you know, it's something that has to be resolved and I don't know what's happening at this point.
Understand.
Any other matters that we need to take up tonight? Oh, Gail?
Yes.
Do we have only one application for next month? Or did you get more in this week?
Nope, just one.
Okay.
I think you need to review it before we might need to have a discussion with the applicant.
Applicants in Holland.
That's right, but they have an email address that's available.
But your concern? I looked at it.
I, I, I thought you had a concern when you, when you initially looked at it.
This is a different one than I, it's, this isn't the application that this is different than the, the prior application, but the other applicant, the other people who were talking about a variance. This is different.
Okay.
This is out on Mascanomo.
Okay. It is.
And somebody is trying to put in a swimming pool, right?
No, they're, no, they're trying, they're trying to expand their deck to connect it to
Yeah.
Yeah, expand the deck to connect to an ADU.
That's not an A, well, I don't know what it is, but it's
Another dwelling.
It's looking for a variance to expand the deck.
Correct.
But, okay.
We're, we're fresh out of swimming pools.
Okay, I think that's all I had. The other thing of interest I thought people would be interested in is 48 Centals on the market.
Forty-eight?
Forty-eight, yeah.
Wait, you want us to comment on that?
I just thought that was interesting.
Very interesting.
It was like to look at real estate and see what's on the market after we've approved something, you know?
Isn't that the applicant that was going to write his own decision for us?
No, 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 that's Union Street. No, this was the one that was
On the harbor?
On the harbor with the appeal because the building inspector would issue an enforcement order for landscaping.
Oh, you mean that, that, that beautiful old house that was redone?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's now on the market?
Yep.
For $5 million.
Is that because the, the Conservation Commission wouldn't let them do what they wanted to do?
I don't know what happened. I don't know what happened on the garage. I, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know anything about it. I just saw it on the listing.
Oh, boy.
That's interesting.
Interesting. Well, maybe there's some other reason for it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Follow all this stuff.
So you want me to send that, want me to send you an email with that link? Or do people write it down?
Please.
Okay, I'll send it.
Sarah, I thought, I saw Brian today and he told me that he was going to be able to stay on the ZBA.
I'm not sure about that.
Okay, he told me he called the state and they told him that he could stay on it. So I don't know.
I will talk to town council because my concern is part of the 40B is connecting to the municipal sewer.
Right.
And the Board of Selectmen, the sewer commissioners. And I'm concerned that creates a conflict of interest.
I wonder if he would just have to abstain from that part of the
I don't know.
Favor request. So
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let town council
Yeah.
Decide. Because it's beyond my pay grade.
As, yes.
Which is zero.
I know, I was gonna say a lot of what we handle is beyond what we're compensated for.
Yeah, so.
Our market rate.
Right, so we'll see what happens with that.
Okay, well, that'll be interesting.
Yep. Okay, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Less than an hour meeting, hooray.
Hey, I move that we adjourn.
Oh, wait, before you adjourn.
I withdraw my motion.
I posted today the next three agendas for the 40B. So next week is engineering peer review and talking about the zoning waivers requested and also conditions regarding access to the property. So I think we need to start those discussions. So we'll, you know, look at things like the size of the car spaces, you know, the parking, that sort of thing. And, and I will do my best to get, pull a summary together for people to kind of highlight what I think we'll be covering, if that's okay.
That would be very helpful, Sarah. And then the other question I had is, when are we going to get sort of like draft conditions or whatever from town council to actually discuss? It's like
So what we, what we have to do is we have to discuss the decision, the conditions that we want. So town council knows what to draft.
Oh.
Okay. So that's what I want to start this Wednesday, next Wednesday. And then do that on June 8th because nobody's ready to present to us on June 8th. So June 22nd will be architectural review, habitat study review and the feasibility study for connecting to the water and sewer.
So as we discuss these conditions, are we, we're not voting on them, we're just discussing them?
I think we can vote on them.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand the process, okay?
I think we have to start putting a stake in the ground.
Right.
And, and I know we've been trying to avoid it, but, but if he doesn't give us an extension on beyond June 23rd, then we will be discussion, discussing conditions and waivers with zero public input. And zero input from the applicant. And I think there are members of the public who are going to want to give input on the conditions we're considering.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And so that's why I want to start doing them. And I think if there's some we can just tick off and do, then we'll have accomplished something.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Yeah, because 40 days after we close the public hearing is not a whole lot of time
No, it's not.
To draft a decision, review a decision and vote on it.
Right.
Right? In the middle of the summer.
Right.
And it's supposed to be a hot summer, so we've got, need beach time.
Yeah, people travel.
Yeah. Okay, now Jim, would you like to make your motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Well, I have a second.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote. Jim?
Approved.
Sean?
Approved.
Catherine? And Sarah votes left. Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.